Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Everett Planning Commission meeting. This is Tuesday, February 17th, 2015, and we'll start out with our roll call.
Chair Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Sosin.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Here.
All right. We have meeting minutes from our meeting a couple of weeks ago, February 3rd. And hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review these minutes. There is guidance that -- I passed out just a quick paragraph describing answering a question, "May a council member vote to approve the minutes for a meeting he or she missed?" And so, the advice from -- related to Robert's Rules of Order was that you don't have to abstain, that you can abstain, but you could also vote. So, just to bring that to the attention of the commissioners, since we didn't have a full group the night of the meeting on February 3rd. Great. So, does anybody have any corrections, comments on the meeting minutes? Commissioner Sosin?
Chair Stewart, I would like to add one word on page seven, which would characterize my comments about -- of that evening. And in the bottom line, if it would be possible to add the word "goal," so it would read, "Wondering if a goal or policy and/or policy could be added to strengthen the city's ability to do code enforcement." That would adequately describe that for me. Thank you.
Okay. So, adding the word -- words "goal" and "policy," and "a policy." Okay. Any other comments on the meeting minutes? If not, do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
So, moved.
And a second?
I'd be happy to second.
All right.
Commissioner Tisdale.
Yes.
Commissioner Sand.
Yes.
Commissioner Sosin.
Yes.
Commissioner Holland.
Yes.
Commissioner Stewart.
Yes.
Or Chair Stewart, sorry.
Yes. All right. Now, we have reports from the members of the commission, starting with Commissioner Tisdale, and then working the way down.
I went on the 502 tour most recently with the Chair and Rick. You are going to give our report.
That's correct. I will.
No report.
No comments.
I, too, did go tour the 502 facility, the Tier Three, I believe, facility.
Tier One.
It's a Tier One facility. Yeah. Backwards there. So, anyways, I can answer any questions about that, but it sounds like Chair Stewart's going to give a report on that, so.
Okay. Yes, so, we had -- the commission had been invited to tour an unincorporated Snohomish County, so, a facility east of Lake Stevens, to see how recreational marijuana is grown and processed. And I think we had about an hour tour of the facility, which was in a R5 zone in the county, and quite remote. I believe it's a 10-acre site, so certainly, it would be a big acreage in a city. So, this was the unincorporated county. And was impressed at just how sophisticated and you could tell the liquor control board's licensing requirements have quite a tracking system for the entire process. And I was favorably impressed with how it's being run as a business. So, I believe at our next week's meeting, we'll be taking up that topic again. And I don't have anything else to report on, so does staff have any comments?
Yes, and a nice segue about the schedule. And what I was going to ask the commission, we had discussed last week about continuing the discussion on marijuana, as well as a few other topics that we spoke about last week until March 10th. And based on just the number of topics, and I think needing a little bit more time to gather some information related to the I-502 land use regulations, I'm asking if the commission would be open to the -- having the marijuana discussion on March 17th rather than on March 10th.
So, commission, that's fine with the Chair? Any comments about that?
Ellen, that would be a regularly scheduled meeting date anyway.
Correct.
So, we -- okay, that would be fine with me.
Okay. And so, we would -- on the March 10th meeting, which would be an extra meeting in March, we would talk about a couple of code amendment issues and revisiting the eternity Lutheran college student housing ordinance once again.
And those issues, that would be the public hearing on March 10th on those topics?
Two of them would be public hearings, one would be a public workshop.
All right. Sounds fine. Any other staff comments?
Thank you. Not at this time, thank you.
All right. And this is the time when citizens have an opportunity to speak to the planning commission. We've got the half-sheets, so we'd appreciate you filling that out, and you can come up to the podium. And this would be to comment on anything that's not on our agenda tonight. The items on our agenda tonight are we're having a public workshop on two new draft elements of our comprehensive plan update. So, housing and capital facilities and utilities will be discussed tonight, so you'll have a chance to talk about those later. But if there's something else you'd like to address tonight, seeing nobody wanting to speak on that, I guess then we'll start with our first item, which will be the comprehensive plan updates, and I'll let staff take it from here.
Thank you, Ellen Giffen, Planning Director. Tonight, we have both the housing element and the capital facilities and utilities element briefings or workshops. Niels Stigerson is going to talk about the housing element, and we would encourage you to ask questions along the way here. It's a pretty important element of the comprehensive plan, and probably one where we would expect a lot of changes in the draft. If you've had a chance to review that draft, a lot of changes have been identified in our first draft. Jim Hanson will then follow up with the presentation on capital facilities and utilities. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Niels.
Good afternoon. Niels Stigerson, Planning. So, for this evening, I'll talk about the background, and then the brief overview of the comprehensive plan element of the housing element, and then go over key data trends and topics, and then open up a discussion and feedback for housing needs and strategies. So, with the background, back in June of '17, there was a workshop talking about the alternative growth option numbers, and talking about the projected growth of potentially 143,000 to 165,000 by 2035. And the city chose to go with the alternative two of 143,000, but still showing the capacity that we can meet for 165,000. And then, in September, we had a workshop where we presented the calculations from the Billable Lands Report and staff's work of showing how we can accommodate those assumed growth numbers. With the -- and the document itself, the background updates basically go over the updated changes in the laws and guidelines. And if there's any questions along the way here, please let me know. And talked about the initial adopted measures since the 1994 comprehensive plan. The laws section, Section 2, are updating the multi-county planning policies, the Snohomish County-wide planning policies, our vision and efforts, and the consolidated plan will be updated once we have that draft element to go. The inventory, there's a lot of statistics there. I'll talk about those key elements in a little second, but if there's any questions there, let me know. And then, finally, the updated goals, objectives, and policies. There are two new sections dealing with sustainability. One specifically regarding residential energy efficiency, and then another one related to resistance to natural disasters. And then, potential measures for those policies. So, for key data, if we're looking at a projected growth of 145,000 to 165,000, that's -- and projected growth or projected numbers for 2014 was around 105,000. We're looking at anywhere from 38,000 to 60,000 additional individuals. And this table here is a short version of a table that's already existing. It should be Table 1 on page 12. And so, what we're seeing here is since -- from the growth from 1980 to 1992, we had 28.6% increased growth. And then, from 1990 to 2000, we had a little over 30%. But from 2000 to 2010, there was a marked decline down to 12%. And then, incremental years of 2011, 2012, 2013, and 2014, we haven't seen growth of over 1%. So, in previous discussions, when we talked about bending the trends, we're really going to have to bend the trends, and we're really going to have to bend the trends on the latter portion of the 2015 to 2035 com-plan update. And I'll get to this in a little section, or in a little bit, but most of that is also geared towards economic incentives here in Everett, where we have the capacity currently to meet a lot of growth. And we have our downtown, our BMU, our core residential. We have the height capacities, but we're not meeting those currently. And we're not expected to see that until maybe 2030.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When we look at the population numbers, there is also the annexation factor in there as well? I mean, the boundaries aren't static, because the boundaries obviously have changed from 1950 on, but in some of these years, I would guess that the city boundaries are pretty much the same. So, it's actual internal growth through those boundaries as opposed to annexation?
And then, in these numbers, excuse me, Ellen Giffen, Planning Department, in the numbers that you see from past decades, much of that growth has been attributable to annexation. For the future growth, two comments. One is that we haven't annexed really any significant area since 2005 in the city. And secondly, based on a growth hearings board case that we were involved with after the last major update to our comprehensive plan, we have to plan for what's in our current city limits. Even though we recognize over time, those limits may change, anytime we do annex and add territory, our growth targets and growth accommodation capacity will change. And so, we'll have to update it as our boundaries change through annexation over time.
Okay. Thank you.
Ellen? When you talked about that 2007 through 2010, the growth then, we know that the economy was rescinded then. Are the -- have any numbers been ran as if that growth rate would have stayed the same?
Not that I'm aware of, that we would have been able to compare the -- that plane or that trend line with what's occurred as a result of the recession. I know that Snohomish County has done a lot of work with each city's growth over time and some of the projections. And in order to hit those, even the lower number, the 143,000, I think we've got a typo there, but 143,000 of our alternative two, we still have to ramp up the rate of housing production and population growth significantly above what it has been in the last 15 years.
So, when we're looking at the additional potential growth of 38,000 to 60,000 residents, most of that growth will happen within multifamily. Looking at the Billable Lands Report and with our own calculations, roughly 80% of that growth is going to be towards multifamily. That's based on the billable lands, what we have in single-family residential versus zones that allow for multifamily housing. And assuming roughly two people per household, that's how we come up with that number of 19,000 to 30,000 additional housing units that will be required by 2035. In previous workshops, this map is a combination of workshops done in March and April of last year, showing where people would like to see projected residential growth, as well as people not wanting to see residential growth. And most of that was in single-family residential neighborhoods up here in the North Peninsula and around here. The majority of where people would like to see growth is in our downtown core residential and along the Evergreen Way corridor, and that corresponds with our current zoning allowances. Again, our downtown, we don't have any maximum density, and the height limits that are possible are anywhere from 80 feet to 200 feet, which we can get up to 16 floors, but that requires a much more intensive type of construction where it's completely concrete. And what we're getting currently is like a four or five-over-one, which is concrete, and the rest is wood. It's much more affordable. But that style of housing, we can get under current code, under our core residential, our BMU, and our E1 M U O, but we're not seeing that sort of development currently Likewise, there's mostly no maximum density in the core residential, except for the R3 zone, which is one dwelling unit per 1,500 square feet, but the other zones have no maximum density requirement. And again, the height limits there are 35 feet, 45 feet, to 65, and we can get easily six, five, six stories in those areas. And it's comparable to the BMU and the E1 zone as well.
Question on that particular slide. So, the green is showing from the public workshop where there'd be an increase in growth, and then the yellow, does that say decreasing? It's a little hard for me to read.
Correct.
Okay.
That's -- actually, if you recall, the workshops that we had out at Evergreen Middle School and one at Everett Station, we asked people to put dots on the map, green dots showing where they would like to encourage more housing development or population growth, and yellow dots where they would like to discourage further increases in development. And so, the yellow dots that you see on the map correspond with the areas that people felt we should discourage increasing residential densities, and then the green dots represent areas where people were supportive of encouraging greater growth in residential density.
And then, the descriptions next to that, where it talks about maximum densities, that's our existing plan?
That's the existing code.
Existing code. So, are there any minimum densities in our existing code, such as for the downtown area?
We do not have a minimum density requirement. That is something that hasn't been too much of an issue in these very high-density zones when a developer wants to build in these zones. Really, what probably the factor that drives the density that they propose is how much parking they can fit on the site. In our -- some of our lower-density multifamily zones, we've seen some of the single-family detached or townhouse developments that aren't nearly as dense as stacked housing that is allowed in some of those multifamily zones. And so, that's more of a market preference, or what the developers feel they'll be able to sell or rent. But in the, for example, these high-density areas, we usually see development pushing the maximum to what they can accommodate, not necessarily theoretically under the zoning, but at least with what they can fit within all of the building envelope parameters, building height. We don't really have much in the way of setbacks in these zones, but really, parking has more of an influence over your density yield than any of the other standards.
When we're talking -- before I leave this map, one of the trends we are seeing is a greater increase of renter occupancy. 54% of all housing units are now renter-occupied in the city. And we're also seeing an increased percentage of multifamily housing development. If you look at page 16, I believe, and Table 5, it shows the changes from 1990 to 2000 and 2010. And when you crunch the numbers, we're seeing a decrease of 2.19% and 1.2%, respectively, for single-family homes and mobile family homes, whereas the correlation of 3.39% increase citywide in multifamily units.
Is there any possibility of putting within the document a goal of trying to achieve at least a -- or achieve or maintain a 50% owner-occupied ratio for the city? Or is that just inherently contrast to the other goals that we're required to have?
I'm not sure that it would be in conflict with other goals. I think from a market perspective, if 80% of our future housing or more, I'm guessing it'll probably be more than 80%, will be multiple-family. In order for that to be owner-occupied, then it would have to be condominium-style development. And a lot of that has to do with whether there's a market for purchasing condominiums as opposed to renting apartments. And as a goal, it wouldn't necessarily conflict with our density standards or growth targets, but it might be just a challenge with what the real estate market will support.
It just strikes me that that's a trend that should be of some concern.
In past versions of the comprehensive plan, we had a pretty strong policy encouraging owner-occupied housing with the proportion of housing units that are going to be multifamily under our growth projections. One of the policies that we've recommended softening is that emphasis on owner-occupied housing. Now, that's not to say that we can't keep that policy in there as -- or at least a goal, but at this point, I think the market realities would suggest that more of our multifamily housing will be rental-based rather than condominium-based. But it is a valid concern and has been in our plan in the past to try to encourage the rate of owner-occupied housing.
And I suppose that part of that is also the formula that's used to see if these things are economically feasible. And I know we've had some discussion in the past of projects that have incentives and rebates, or lower fees, or discounting of taxes as a way to encourage development. And you have that for multiple-family units, but I don't know that you have those for owner-occupied units.
We do not in any of our -- yeah. In any of our incentives for housing development, the multifamily property tax exemption, there is no incentive that rewards developers for providing owner-occupied housing. And we do have incentives for affordable housing, but -- and we have a great need for affordable housing, but at a lot of those income levels, condominiums may not be feasible, and owner-occupied therefore would be less likely.
Sort of a nice segue to this next slide is the discussion of affordability. With new units, most of the affordable -- most of that housing is going to be affordable for homes or households that have moderate and higher income. The construction costs are going to preclude a lot of that for low, extremely low households, unless there is some sort of subsidy. One of the trends we have seen is that the percentage of households that have 30% and lower, 30 to 50, and 50 to 80% are decreasing, or sorry, they are increasing in percentage-wise, whereas households that have 80% median income or greater are decreasing, correlating to a cost burden of households. And these tables, both these tables are in the housing element report. The cost burden is on page 15 at the bottom. For owner-occupied -- owner households in Everett, about 46% were cost burden. And correlation to Snohomish County, only 45.7% were cost burden. And when we're looking at renter households, over 51.6% of households paid 30% or more of their income on rents. So, for renters, the majority of the households are cost burdens. When we're looking at household size as well, the household size is, since 1980, has relatively stayed constant, and yet, we're seeing a lower -- or an increasing percentage of lower household incomes, which is indicating that the lowering of the household income is not due to a decreased household size. With the recent downturn, there has been a sort of blip for affordability. If you look at Table or Figure 6 on Table 22, you can see that as from 2008 and 2012, the amount or percentage-wise of home sales that were affordable, by 2012, the majority of the housing stock was affordable for households with a moderate income. But in 2008, before the bubble burst, it was roughly less than half of that was affordable. And then, for renter housing units, roughly 44% of households earning between 51 and 80% were affordable. Households between 31 to 50% of the average median income, only 9% was affordable. In relation to Snohomish County, 5% was affordable for extremely low income, and 19% for very low income. For special-needs housing, and for numbers in 2012, roughly 19,281 residents, or 17.6% of Snoomish County were considered special-needs housing, including elderly homeless and people with disabilities. The Everett Housing Authority guesstimated roughly 5,600, there's a waitlist of 5,600 people currently that's being unmet. However, there is some duplication there. There's a multiple-category lists, and so, that number can be a little higher than reality. And then, when we're looking at the housing, needs for affordable housing, for extremely low, very low, and low, the percentages of 11% and through 17%, and this number is also... On page 26 and 27, if we go with Snoomish County's Housing Characteristics and Needs Report, we're looking at roughly meeting an additional 2,090 extremely-low-income housing units, 2,090 very-low-income housing units, and 3,230 low-income housing units on top of that which is currently unmet.
I have a question. When you talk about special-needs housing, can you characterize, what are the characteristics of a dwelling that would meet that special need? So, does it have to be a single-story for accessibility or elevators? Or what, what does that mean?
Well, it's, special needs covers several categories of households. It can include disabled persons who may need a single-level type of housing units or elevator-type access, but it also includes people that just elderly fall into that special needs, homeless fall into that special needs category, and not all elderly or homeless persons are frail or disabled. And so, special needs kind of pertains to a variety of special needs. It might be based on disability, it might be based on income, it might be based on age. Typically, the elderly are more challenged physically than the general population of a lower age, but that, it's kind of, it's not just disabled.
Okay, thank you.
As far as strategies, there was a number of strategies in the In-Fill Measures Report, and that was presented, I believe, back in 2013 for Commission to review. But of those, measures that could potentially help for affordable housing is to allow cottage housing in single-family residential zones, allow rowhouse developments in single-family residential zones, developing a tailored infill overlay program, establishing a development and design standards for micro-units, creating a flexible small parcel standards, redesignate low-density areas for multiple-family development, eliminate minimum parking requirements for small multifamily developments, expanding lower parking requirements outside of the downtown core, expanding the multifamily tax exemption, providing incentives for private land assembly. These are some of the key strategies. We'd like some discussion and feedback from Commission on this evening. And then, another discussion point would be to talk about the Everett Community Streets Initiative Task Force recommendations. In relation to, I believe it was Strategy Three, that talked about providing more housing and shelter, to build more shelter bed capacity, serving a range of populations, included increasing funding for facilities, developing shelter capacity to serve youth and adults that had criminal records, and increasing the supply of permanent-supported subsidy, subsidized housing, looking at the Housing First Model, housing-level model that Seattle and, excuse me, Ballingham utilized, preserving affordable, existing affordable units, and developing more single-room occupancy housing. And then, another discussion point is to look at other jurisdictions within Snoomish County and have their need to address homelessness issues besides having a burden overwhelmingly on the city of Everett.
With that, that's kind of a quick overview of some of the housing issues. We've identified some policy changes that are proposed in the Draft Housing Element. We're prepared to comment or respond to questions if you have questions, but this is intended to be a time where we get to talk a little bit about what our housing policies or direction should be. For example, the question that Commissioner Sand brought up about owner occupancy or having that kind of a policy, certainly, anything that's germane to the housing issue from the potential measures to implement some of these housing needs, land use changes, financial measures are all fair game for discussion tonight. And we'd like to hear from you. If you don't have a great deal of comments tonight, we can certainly continue to discuss this as you think about this at future workshops, but this is our first cut at presenting to you draft changes to the policies. And with that, I'll pause there and see if you have any questions or comments for us.
So, Commissioners, any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Sosin?
Okay. On page seven, right-hand side, HO6, the last line mentions "single-room occupancy housing," which alarms me because we have had, in the city of Everett, nothing but really difficult and substandard single-room occupancy housing experiences, to my knowledge. So, I was surprised to see that there, and I would like to know how does single-room occupancy, as it's envisioned here, differ from what we've been considering as microhousing in other discussions?
Excellent point and question. First of all, a lot of the problems that we've had with what are referred to as single-room occupant buildings in, for example, our downtown, have been enforcement, code enforcement issues. They've been buildings that have been remodeled, occupied without benefit of permit, and although our code would allow for those to be developed with single-room occupancy-type housing, a lot of our problems revolve around those that have been substandard or done without meeting all of our housing and fire safety codes. So, a properly-designed, compliant building that meets fire codes and building codes does provide a form of affordable housing. It's not something that we have a lot of experience with, other than in some of the older buildings, and, but it is something that is not dissimilar to microhousing in the, I guess, the newer sense in terms of just small units. However, with a lot of the single-room occupants or SROs, they do not have kitchen facilities or their own bathroom facilities. Typically, there's a common bathroom facility, or there may be a kitchen facility in the building. There may not. It may be just really a place for people to sleep and the, how they take their meals. Certainly don't cook them in their, in the rooms if they don't have cooking facilities. Whereas, microhousing, at least the newer stuff that we've seen some presentations on earlier in the last couple of years, and you see in a number of the other communities, and particularly Seattle, those typically do have their own bathroom or a small cooking facility. It might be more along the lines of a microwave and a mini-fridge. You may not even have a cooktop, but there would, in each room, but you might have a common kitchen for a number of units that could use a single kitchen facility within a building. There might be one on a floor or one in the whole building, depending upon the number of units within a building. And so, those are more affordable housing types than your standard multifamily housing. And within our code, we don't provide specifically for microhousing. There may be forms of microhousing that do meet building codes if they have adequate bathroom and cooking facilities, however.
That helps me understand the difference. My inclination would be to push our policies towards safe, affordable, and decent housing. And even though we don't have any history yet of microhousing built in the city, that seems to be closer to my definition of what would be safe, decent, and affordable. I think oftentimes, the stories that I've heard about single-room occupancy issues are when people actually are trying to cook in their own unit without having any dedicated kitchen, you know, camping gas stoves, hot plates, you name it, fire built on the floor, pretty much anything's game. So, if we have a discussion about how we want to define that between the two, I would, personal opinion, prefer to see us go with a discussion of the microhousing rather than a single-room occupant.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other Commissioners? Commissioner Sand?
When I look at the list of the strategies, it appears to me that many, if not all of them, are really, would really result in a lessening of the standards to achieve a higher density yield for these projects. And my concern is where would be the companion part of the code or the policies that would make sure that if we do have this much higher density or this infill approach, that there are still the balancing there for recreational services to be available, recreational needs, typical city services would be provided for these higher densities. The concept of having some recreational square footage on a multiple-family project doesn't, to me, doesn't seem to really satisfy what should be the need for recreational opportunities that's different from an owner-occupied kind of property or single-family property. So, if we go down the path of providing for higher densities, infill, that type of thing, I think we need to have companion changes in the code as far as the requirements to make sure that the city itself isn't burdened with some responsibility to provide opportunities and services that would otherwise be provided.
Thank you. And this list is certainly not a mandate or something we're proposing as part of the adoption of the comprehensive plan. If we were to bring forward some code revisions, they would have their own process where we would get into some detail about the adequacy of standards, whether they're design standards or facility standards that would ensure that it is quality housing. The premise here is that we're trying to do two things. One is to increase some of our residential development capacity. The other part is to get at some of the issues that sometimes thwart housing affordability. And so, it might be, and in the past, we've talked about this without, without it being adopted by the City Council, but for example, what we call infill dwelling units on the back of a lot, you know, where you have alley access. That's one of the strategies, and I don't see it in this list, but I think it is in one of the, at least one of the sections of the Housing Element here where that would be one strategy where it's been very successful in our historic overlay zones. Not a lot, not used a lot, but where it has been built, it's been attractive. It has not really changed the character of the community. There's enough open space between the main principal dwelling unit on the front of the lot and the infill dwelling unit on the back of the lot. And while we don't get, you know, park-sized facilities on small lots with small yards, it is something that has been successful in small doses around here. And so, those are the kinds of things that would have to go through a separate code revision process where we would get into quite a bit more detail about the nuts and bolts of how those code revisions would work. These are mostly code-type changes. There are a few others, like expanding the multifamily property tax exemption, which does have incentives for affordable housing and also has been used successfully, at least in the downtown. Just about every developer that we've talked to that has used the property tax exemption said their projects would not have been financially viable without that tax exemption. And we're finally starting to see some real critical mass being developed in the downtown with regard to that housing.
Other comments? Commissioner Holland?
Alan, you mentioned Policy 4.5.3, which is on 31 about infill or accessory dwelling units. And I was just curious, it talked about allowing detached and attached accessory DU's. Are detached accessory DU's currently allowed in all the residential zones? And then, secondly, you talked about setbacks and things like that. So, I know, for instance, in Marysville, we decreased the setbacks in order to encourage that infill development along alleys and things like that, so I thought maybe you could talk to us about that.
Yes, and currently, our accessory dwelling units, other than in the historic overlay zones, are not allowed to be detached. That was something that we did talk about several years ago with the Commission. I think Commissioners Sand and Sosin were part of those discussions, and it went on to the City Council for consideration, but Council elected not to, not to make that code amendment. It's on our list of potential implementation measures to consider in the future here. And so, I guess that answered your first question. The second question, part of that question, I've...
Just, is there reduced setbacks, I guess, in the historic areas or along alleyways in order to accommodate those infill lots, rather than having your typical 20-foot rear yard setback or something like that? If you're on an alley there, you could get a reduced setback for that accessory DU?
Yes, that's how it works with the historic overlay zones, detached, or excuse me, a decreased rear setback because you're coming off of the alley there and you're not right up against the fence to the neighbor behind you. You're separated by a 24-foot alley in most cases.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Go ahead.
Let you go ahead. Commissioner Tisdale?
Thank you. So, Alan, can you help me understand Alternative 1 and Alternative 2, and how that works? Are those numbers the same as in the county's comp plan, Alternative 1 and Alternative 2? Because they also have an Alternative 3?
I'm not sure if they correspond with the same numerals, 1 and 2, but the numbers are the same as two of the alternatives in the county comprehensive plan for Everett. The higher-growth scenario of about 165,000 is our Alternative 1. I think it's also the county's... I think it's also the county's Alternative 1. And that's the one that, we haven't made a decision, staff's preliminary recommendation at this time, and, and I'm calling it preliminary because we haven't done the SEPA analysis yet to make a formal recommendation, but is that probably Alternative 2 is more realistic. And although we have the capacity under our current codes, as Niels was illustrating with some of the standards that are possible, it just aren't currently being developed within the community. We, we have the capacity for that Alternative 1, but we just don't believe that the real estate market within the next 10 or 15 years is going to support those kinds of construction costs or construction types that will get us to those much higher densities. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it's just some of what I've understood and read from some of the industry folks, both on the environmental side and the, and the supply side. It seems that there's a lot of conversation about Alternative 1 and Alternative 3 and not much about Alternative 2. So that's where I was trying to, is Alternative 2 been looked at or talked about with that, either of those popular, either of those groups?
And you're, you're referring to the county's alternatives 1, 2, and 3?
I'm referring to our 1, 2, and 3. Excuse me, yes, the conversation, the industry conversation is, is between the county's 1 and 3.
Okay. And as I understand it, if I recall the numbers correctly, is that the county's Alternative 3 actually would thwart our ability to realize our Alternative 1 because they would be creating more capacity in the unincorporated southwest urban growth area-
Right.
-that is on land that, urban, definitely within the urban growth area, but would increase residential capacities outside of the city and probably on lands that are easier to develop, less challenges to overcome through redevelopment, like most of our, our housing capacity in some of our high-density areas. And so, I'm not sure, I, I lost train of thought on the question, but I-
Because, because what I heard is it, it appears that Alternative 2 of the city of Everett is kind of the numbers, if I heard you correct, Niels, that are more achievable?
More achievable for us, and I believe they're consistent with the county's Alternative 2. Now, our Alternative 2 is also more likely to be what we will see in terms of a growth target with the county's Alternative 3 than we would be likely to see the higher-growth target in Everett for our Alternative 1, the 165,000. The difference between, I think, just the existing capacity, even if the county wasn't increasing their capacity in their unincorporated urban growth area under their Alternative 3 is such that it's more likely to see, you're more likely to see the development community develop in the unincorporated UGA than you are to see a lot of development in our downtown redevelopment areas, just because it's easier, less costly, and probably a housing style, for the most part, single-family that the development community would prefer and a lot of our, I think the market would prefer. There'd have to be a, a market shift in the demand for high-density, either apartments or condominiums for us to see those kinds of growth numbers be feasible in Everett.
And what this is really, then with ST3 when you overlay, because we're talking 2030, and when you put ST3 into the equation, if, if, if we don't get closer to Alternative 2, how do we make ST3 work?
Well, I believe if we have light rail transit service, high-capacity transit service to Everett by 2030, I, I think that might be a little optimistic. It's going to be in Linwood in 2023, and so for it to be planned and built and funded and, and extended to Everett by 2030, it would still take a few years for the real estate market to respond to that public investment in infrastructure with the high densities and, and the numbers needed to get to those higher-growth targets. We're, we're not certain that it'll be here by 2030, and if it is, it'll still take a few years before we see a large-scale market response to those, that infrastructure. And we still have to, you know, have the station, the right number of stations in the right locations and do our area plans and-
I mean, I, I think that's our job is to think ahead, and if, it's almost like when you look at 164th, which I know is outside of the city of Everett, but as soon as they started talking transit and getting there and getting close and, you know, the densities are, the, 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 the units are just popping, popping up all over the place. And that's kind of what we're talking about here is, and that's actually happening ahead of it getting to Linwood, because where those densities are increasing at 164th and south, you know, that will, that will be serviced by ST3. It won't be serviced by ST2 because that will stop down at, I'm sorry?
Linwood.
Yeah, Linwood, right in the beginning. So I, just trying to understand, using the current, what's happening, it seems that more is moving north and, you've answered my question. Thank you.
Okay.
Other comments? Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you, Chair Stewart. On, trying to strike out for balance in how we describe our housing going forward in this vision of the comp plan. On page 27 still, the middle paragraph where, where we declare that since Everett already has more, more low-income and subsidized housing than other jurisdictions, other jurisdictions within the county, and that we'd like to see other areas within the county take a more active approach to developing them. And then reading down into our goals, objectives, and policies in that next paragraph, it seems to me that, you know, we immediately concentrate on the low-income range of housing options and how we will encourage them going forward. I would like to see what other people think about also having some verbiage in there that says that we are still interested in market-rate housing, as I think we need to continue to balance the housing stock if it's not going to be single homeownership households. I think it, it's, would be a better balance to strike that we are still interested and focused on, on developing market-rate housing in our, in our higher-density areas. And there's nothing there that's, that says that that's still an important goal and objective. So anybody else have any?
Yeah, I concur with you, Commissioner Sosin. And so on page 27, in the middle of the page, that last paragraph before we get to the heading "All Objectives and Policies," the last sentence seems as though that could be turned and, and maybe should be turned into a policy, a policy like increase the proportion of market-rate housing or something to that effect. When you read that last sentence, it's-
I was just looking for the consistency between our, our previous statement about allowing other jurisdictions to develop their pro-rata share of the range of lower and affordable housing stock and our desire to continue to increase our proportion of market-rate households. So, and, and that gets back to Commissioner Sand's statement about trying to keep owner-occupied housing as a goal, even though we might foresee that it doesn't increase in, in a great way in years to come. You know, if we could have a policy of no net loss of single homeownership or in our residential neighborhoods, maybe that goes towards balancing the range of housing that we're looking for in the next comp plan horizon.
Commissioner comments? Commissioner Holland?
I, I just wanted to point out that on the next page, on Policy 4.1.2, it, it does talk about promoting alternatives for large lots, single-family detached dwelling, and large footprint apartment complex, which kind of coincides with market-rate development. So there appears to be a policy under that of housing types and opportunities.
One comment that I have is related to the focused market analysis. In the back of the element, there's a map and then a corresponding table for, I guess, seven different areas within, within mostly North Everett, North and Central Everett that would, and our later process. And I'm wondering if this at all would tie in with the Puget Sound, regional councils, growing transit communities? If some of these, you know, can we get PSRC to help with doing these additional studies?
Okay, well, first of all, the map on page 42, is that the map that you're referring to? This is all text in the current housing element that would be stricken, and, and the graphic didn't show it very well, but that map would be deleted as would the table that follows it on page 43. This is part of our 2005 housing element update, and things have changed significantly enough with Vision 2040 being adopted since that time and our multi-county, or excuse me, our countywide planning policies calling for a little bit different approach, plus some of the plans that we have adopted since 2005 include the downtown plan, the core area residential plan, the Broadway mixed-use zone, and, and some other strategies that that section would be removed from the plan.
Okay.
With respect to the growing transit communities work, that is something that has a, I would characterize it more as a toolkit of choices that relate particularly to high-capacity transit. And so while we won't be seeing that yet for a number of years in Everett, other than in the form of SWIFT bus rapid transit, the station areas that are established for SWIFT or for, in the future, light rail stations, there are a lot of good suggestions, toolkits or tools that can be used out of that growing transit communities program for our consideration. We will have to do, you know, station area planning when we know where the light rail will be built and where the stations will be located, and that information and, and those tools will fit very well into those future planning processes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Alan, I, I think when we talked about the targets before, we talked about that a lot of it was based on the assumption that, that there would be light rail or there would be high-capacity transit, be it light rail or the BRT program, that would help facilitate the moving of people around the county, and that we almost need to have that type of system in place to, to be able to handle the targets that are proposed. So would that still stay within the document, that there's a discussion someplace that, that there's an expectation that we would have some type of high-capacity system?
Yes, and that, that is in the introduction chapter to some extent and in our land use element where we actually identified the light rail alignment proposed by the city based upon some work that we have done with Sound Transit. And so those growth targets, I agree that the higher-growth numbers of our Alternative 1 are probably not realistic until we have really the, the light rail system providing that higher capacity, and I believe it's a higher capacity than the SWIFT BRT provides. And certainly, the investment in stations, light rail stations generates, at this point, a lot more likelihood for transit-oriented development than we've seen around bus rapid transit. And the literature in a few areas of the country where we do have bus rapid transit or other communities have bus rapid transit, the level of investment that's followed is kind of commensurate with the level of investment that the community put into not only the transit infrastructure, but the complete streets type of infrastructure, streetscape. Cleveland is a great example where they've had tremendous success with their bus rapid transit corridor, but they invested a quarter of a billion dollars in a, a short corridor, shorter than our BRT corridor in Snohomish County. We took the opposite approach of just trying to get the system up and running and putting the BRT stations in, but at a minimal cost and a much, much less infrastructure investment in support of that transit investment. And we haven't seen the same kind of redevelopment stimulated by that transit investment.
Thank you. Moving to page 38, just a couple of questions and comments. So on number eight on page 38, it, it talks about allow rear yard infill dwellings in single-family zones where alley access is available. And Alan, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was discussions previously about allowing those in, for non-alley access lots. So I was curious as to whether or not we should amend that to state that we could potentially look at allowing for infill development or accessory dwelling units when alley access is not necessarily the only option, obviously, to help increase our housing capacity. And then that kind of goes into page 39, and then maybe you could explain the difference to me between number two and number four. Number two talks about, you know, for code amendments to revise accessory dwellings, to also allow such units in detached buildings subject to design standards, but then it goes on to number four, talk about infill dwellings with rear alley access. So is there a difference between accessory DUs and infill dwellings? And is there a contradiction there?
That's a good question, and it's probably a redundant potential implementation measure. We do define infill dwellings different than accessory dwelling units in our code, but for the, for all practical purposes, they're the same thing as a detached accessory dwelling unit. So your point is well-taken. It's probably redundant, and we can reword that so that we've only got one measure calling for basically the same thing instead of two.
Commissioner Sosin?
Thank you. On this topic, I do remember that we have had some discussions about infill dwellings or accessory dwelling units in situations where, certainly where alley access is available because that's our code right now, but also where, where alley access is not available. And it seems to me dimly in my recollection that, that it was access for fire trucks and service vehicles to have access to those back units that was somewhat limiting us. And also that in, within the city of Everett, where we don't have a defined old-fashioned grid where we have alleys, we also don't have sidewalks and, very often don't have sidewalks, and street parking is very compromised. So that, if I'm not mistaken, that was kind of where we got into a crunch about being able to design a code that was one-size-fits-all for all of those other types of configurations of lots. So can you refresh my memory on that and why we only do it now where alley access is available?
My memory might also need refreshing a little bit, but I, I do seem to recall that the non-alley lots were more problematic just because it's more difficult to hide the parking. You had design issues with driveways and more cars out front, or the challenge getting cars out of the front yard and into the backyard where the housing, detached housing unit was, but then you're eliminating open space that's necessary in those backyards. And so that was something that wasn't too popular. I believe one of our commissioners at that time, who is now on the city council, had a real issue with allowing the detached accessory dwelling units for that very reason. a real issue with allowing the detached accessory dwelling units for that very reason.
Any other comments? If not, this is an opportunity for members of the public who would like to comment on the housing element. Anybody like to comment tonight on the housing element? Okay. So staff, I don't know if we've, we certainly haven't systematically gone down the list of strategies. Do you have any particular ones that you would like some input from the planning commission on tonight?
Only, not necessarily. These are just potential measures that might be used to increase housing supply or affordability. We weren't looking for specific comments on going down the list like that, but just more to generate thought or reaction. We will probably leave most of these things in the draft of the housing element, just as potential measures, because anything that we bring back to you will have a separate review process, where we'll get into many more of the details about impacts and design issues and so forth. But nice to have a, I guess, a laundry list of things to consider, and if we don't like the way that, or the public doesn't like the way they're getting drafted up for implementation, then we'll hear about it, and we'll expect that you and the city council will make good choices about what is acceptable for the community or not. It's kind of hard at this stage, at a general policy level, without the details of a code amendment, to envision what some of these housing forms may look like.
Alan, can you remind us what the process will be now? Say we take this home, and we look at it again over the weekend, and we kind of think back about the discussion we've had tonight, and we come up with some suggestions. Would we bring those forward at the public hearing, or will we have another workshop? Or should we just send them to you in writing? Or what's the process?
Well, we have still some process ahead of us. We have yet to draft environmental, under SEPA, any environmental review of these policy changes and potential implementation measures. That would be one opportunity, but we will also have more opportunity with public hearings. We may, how we schedule those, we haven't determined yet. I suspect we'll go back through and address things in the land use element, in the housing element, in the transportation element, and so forth, as we get more, closer to the finish line here. But certainly, you'll have more opportunities to provide us feedback. Since this is a legislative and not a quasi-judicial matter, if you have thoughts and you want to pass them along to staff by email or correspondence, you know, we can include that in the public record so that, you know, we can, we can talk about those things at future discussions.
And the target, whether it's one or two, whatever the number is, will that go forward to the city council for them to make a decision? Or will we have an idea of what the target number is when we review this and make a decision?
I think you may have missed a meeting or two ago, when we talked about this a little bit, and staff's comment at that time, which I'll repeat now, is that we're leaning preliminarily toward Alternative Two. We don't think that Alternative One is achievable, given just economic circumstances in the foreseeable future, for a variety of reasons. And so while we can't make that recommendation formally until we've done the environmental analysis on the whole draft comp plan update, that's likely where we're leaning. And so you will have an opportunity to discuss that and decide if you favor that or support a higher or lower number, and then the recommendation will go on to the city council.
The reason I ask is I'm assuming that the higher or the lower number would possibly change what the recommendations might be as to the list of possible strategies.
It very well could, and I think keeping something like a list of potential implementation measures, whether those ever get implemented or not, will depend upon, I guess, the amount of housing that we feel we need to accommodate, based on growth targets we decide to establish through this process. And so whether those stay on the list or come off, if they stay on the list, it doesn't mean that each one of those will be, become a code amendment. It's sort of a policy choice on the part of the commission and council about which ones are likely to be well-received by the community and accomplish what our policy objectives are.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner? Alan, do those have any ranking, or they're just up there?
Just a laundry list at this point.
And the bottom bullet that talks about provide incentives for private land assembly, is there a, is there a model that you've looked at, or is there?
Well, it wouldn't be probably any kind of incentive where the city's rewarding, well, let me take that back. It would probably be more of a density incentive, where land assembly, if the more land you could put together, probably, because you have a larger parcel, the more land you put together, the more density you can probably accommodate with, without some of the challenges of trying to fit high-density on really small lots. And so there may be density incentives that, if you had, if the minimum lot area was X, and you had two or three times the minimum lot area, maybe you could achieve more density, and so there would be an incentive for property owners to put two or three lots together and be able to get a higher return on the number of units they could build.
Because sometimes that seems to be, you know, in the billable lands inventory and all of that, that seem, you know, you get one or two parcels, whether it's a lot, or two lots, or a acre, and you get one entity that doesn't, and I'm not saying they should be forced, but there's, then it, you know, the price that they want to charge the builder or the developer, whichever it be, to achieve those densities is, it makes it, the project won't pencil out.
And that's something that we try not to get involved with, the transaction between buyer and seller, but if there are incentives that make it more worthwhile for somebody to put together a larger assemblage of lots, rather than trying to build on several small lots independently, then it might be worth that developer's time and money to pay the premium.
So we're talking the same thing, I'm just saying it differently.
Okay.
Is that, the incentives are to be used, I understand the city shouldn't be in those negotiations, but those incentives could be used by the private sector to assemble those land assemblies?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're ready to move on to the capital facilities element.
Projector there, the computer? Oh, no, here you go, right here.
Jim Hansen, planning staff. Capital facilities element is a, well, actually, I'm here to speak about capital facilities and utilities element. The capital facilities element is a required element in the comprehensive plan by the Growth Management Act, as is the utilities element. They're listed separately in the state act, but it's something that, since our initial Growth Management Comp Plan was prepared, we've put them in one section, although we kind of separate them into two subsections, so, but they do have a lot of similarities. The capital facilities element is important because it's, the infrastructure is kind of the foundation for accommodating growth in the city. Growth Management Act requires that certain services and facilities are available prior to development, or have a financial commitment for growth. These three mandatory services are water, sewer, and transportation. Capital facilities, that, oh, yeah, got to move above. Capital facilities and other public facilities are primarily what we're covering in, under the capital facilities section, and those are parks, fire and police, water, sewer, stormwater, libraries, and other municipal services, which I think is primarily solid waste or recycling. Also covered in this section is public housing, although very briefly, well, actually, everything's covered pretty briefly in this section. And transportation facilities, streets, sidewalks, and trails are addressed in the transportation element. In the utilities element, we're looking at and addressing public utilities, special districts like Snohomish County PUD, school districts, and private utilities like natural gas, and telecommunications and cable, which is probably the most dynamic area that's under constant change, and basically what we're doing is trying to provide the names of a service providers, I think, at this point. This section also has a separate, different goals and policies, basically because we're looking at governing outside agencies and private businesses, and more cooperative-type thing, where we're, on the goals and policies for capital facilities, we're directly addressing city services. The major amendments in this chapter are mainly, we've added a goal on page, on climate change and sustainability, with goals and objectives and policies, which are on page eight through, or start on bottom of page eight and go through page eleven. Mainly, these address greenhouse gas reduction, recycling and conservation, and the addition of a climate action plan for municipal operations, city departments, and services. Other updates in this chapter are to the capital improvement plans from the water and sewer districts, and updating of all the, the public facilities maps. We've also consulted with the various departments and updated all the summaries in there, and looked at what facility needs they might have over the next, well, anticipated facility needs over the next twenty years. As you can see, I guess we ran into some time issues and that sort of thing, so the maps haven't all been updated, and we need to get a couple of cleaner copies of the capital improvement plans, the short-range capital improvement plans for water and sewer improvements, although they are in there. These are, they're, both the comprehensive water plan and the comprehensive sewer plan have been in the process of being updated, and I'm not sure if they've been adopted yet, but they will be this spring, and prior to our adoption of the plan, I'm sure. In the utility section, we've made amendments and changes primarily to the, just the summary of the services, and we've removed the Port of Everett subsection from the end of the chapter, because we're going to, it'll be covered in the New Port element. Questions?
I've got a few questions. Picking up on, Commissioner Sand was mentioning about parks and recreational facilities for people who are, who don't have a yard, if they're in a multifamily downtown development. And I was looking at the table about capital improvement programs, projects on page fourteen. Then I was trying to look at the text to see sort of what is going to happen to the level of service of park facilities with all the additional population. Is that, do you think that's addressed somewhere, like on page thirty?
I think that's probably more addressed in the existing parks and recreation element of the plan, where they really get into detail in the long-range planning. This is more a six-year programmatic plan. It, yeah, the, there's, I guess, a well-documented shortage of parks in the southern part of the city. The city's Parks Department has recently acquired property out there on the, I guess it's Cas, well, what's, oh, Twin Creeks neighborhood, I think, is what it's called now. Out there, off of Bruscrew Road, behind the mall, and kind of adjacent to the interurban trail back there. Again, I, I don't know that they have any capital improvements planned for that. I think their policies have been, in the past, you know, to try and maintain and keep up the existing facilities, and make improvements to those to allow for more intense use. It's a difficult thing for, especially with the, I guess, the funding levels the city has experienced since the recession and that sort of thing, to have the dollars to spend on purchasing property and that sort of thing.
Another topic, so you mentioned the climate change and sustainability, some new sections in here. So on page four, under sort of the introduction of the topic, just focuses really on the, as you mentioned, the air quality, greenhouse gas emissions, and I was wondering if you might consider adding a statement in here to address stormwater management, because then, later on in the document, on page nine, there's three policies that, that talk about stormwater management, so policy six-point, five-point-three, point-four, and point-five, all talk about stormwater. And so then, looking at the objective that's on the top of the page, page nine, perhaps we might want to either add a second objective that addresses stormwater management, or add a couple more phrases or another sentence to objective six-point-five-point-one. And I thought that then, on page eleven, this draft does a good job referencing some of the more specifics regarding stormwater management. It talks about the green infrastructure program, so it was just more the introductory paragraph, and then an objective that then sets up for the policies that are included.
Good idea.
Those are my comments. Any other commissioners have comments? Commissioner Holland?
Thank you. Regarding the school district capital facilities plan, are those adopted as a sub-element to the CFP?
They are when we get them from the school district.
Biannular.
And those are the most recent versions we've received from.
Would it be a good idea to include what the impact fees are under the current codes on page 44 somewhere, that, so they could be easily accessible without having to obtain the actual district's capital facilities plans themselves?
We deal with those in separate school impact fee ordinance. We don't list them in the, in our comprehensive plan, because those get updated every couple of years and, as do their facilities plans. I suppose we could put those in there, but we just really focus that within our school impact fee ordinance that, whether it's, regardless of which school district it is, we've got the two school districts here in Everett.
Yeah, as long as they're easily accessible, that's all I was curious about. So if they're in the code, then the actual rates are in the code, then that's fine.
Yes.
Thank you.
Other comments? Commissioner Sand?
Yes, I was looking at the very start under goals, objectives, and policies. And could you remind us of what, what is covered by concurrency? Is it just water, sewer, and?
Transportation.
Or can you, can you also include parks?
We can, I mean, we can as a function of city choosing to do so. Our city has chosen not to use parks or have a concurrency policy with parks, just because of the challenge of finding properties and in a developed community like ours and keeping up with the funding. At this point, we do not have any park impact fees. That's something that we've never had, that if we had a change in that policy, that might change the thought about concurrency, but it's not something that is required to have concurrency in the comprehensive plan.
So if we were to consider suggesting something along that approach, would this be the location to put that in, or would it be later on under the parks capital plan?
Well, I think you could put something in here about considering, making parks a concurrency element under the comprehensive plan. That obviously would have to go through the Parks Commission and City Council for making that final call on that, but if that's something you want to encourage the city to consider, that is something that would be under your purview here.
Okay. Thank you.
In that regard, though, wouldn't the city have to establish a level of service?
That's what I'm looking for.
Along with that?
I mean, I don't know how you can try to maintain a certain quality of services in regard to parks without knowing what your current level of service is and have a way to measure it later on, so.
And if that's something that evolves into a discussion where subsequently we would be talking about that in a parks comprehensive plan, then we would certainly have the Parks Department come and talk to you about that and the work that they've done in the past and updates they would need to do in order to implement such a system.
Okay. Any other questions from the commission? Okay. This is an opportunity for the public to ask questions about our capital facilities element draft. Yes, I see.
Good evening. Victor Harris, 3017 Lombard Avenue, Everett, Washington. I'm curious on what I'm seeing in this. Do we have an inventory of public facilities available? Is this in the document, or is this somewhere else in the document?
Have appendices, don't we, Jim?
We have appendices on a number of the utilities, and we have an inventory of all the city facilities, yes.
Thank you. Because I'm trying to find that. I'm also looking for plan or concept idea of perhaps a mid-range auditorium for the city somewhere between 2,500 and 4,000 capacity. Is there any thought of that? Seems we have a large facility, we have several small facilities that are not necessarily aligned properly. And I'm thinking in terms of gymnasiums and such, but we don't have a good mid-range auditorium. I'm wondering, this may or may not be the right place for that question, but it's the idea of, should we be looking at that, especially when we start talking about, you know, much higher numbers in our growth management and such. I think there's a hole in there that we're not quite filling. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on the capital facilities element? Seeing none? I think that was our last item for tonight, so staff, refresh my memory, we're meeting again next week, correct?
No, not next week. It'll be the first Tuesday in March, which will be the third. We'll meet again on the 10th and then again on the 17th.
Okay. Thank you, and we're adjourned.
Thank you.